Good evening, everybody. This is the city council meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2016. We'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Laurenti, Wright, Weyfenbach, Doyle, Estes, Lewis, Drew, Roberts, Nordstrom, Scott. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to our invocation by Brad Clausen, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
If you're so inclined, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for our government which you helped us form. You are the God of power and might and wisdom and justice. And through you and those who follow you, your authority is rightly administered. Laws are enacted and judgment is decreed and justice is done. Please pour out your spirit upon these leaders and help them find the truth of your word and apply it to the governance of our lives. Help them to be men and women of integrity that they may govern and do what that which is right, that they will be merciful, unselfish, and sensitive to people's needs, that they will be humble, recognizing that we all give account. Let wisdom and knowledge be pleasant to them and something they seek diligently. Let discretion preserve them and understanding keep them, delivering them from evil and evil influence. Cut off that which will destroy harmony and peace but enable their decisions, that we may lead quiet and peaceful lives in all godliness and honesty. Bring to light hidden agendas that will cause destruction of peace and prosperity of the city and keep us recognizing your grace and mercy over this region. Help us to make right the wrongs of history and to heal old wounds and do right by all that live here. I pray that you will protect, encourage, and reward these leaders for their sacrifices they serve the people of Rapid City. And finally, Father, bless and protect their families, giving them grace, mercy, protection, and provision, for they have all sacrificed much in allowing these members of their families to serve us. In all this, we give you honor and glory, for you are good and just in all that you do and say, and we ask you to cover us in all that we do and say, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation under God and whose rule with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we'll have the adoption of the agenda. If there are no motions to change or add to the agenda, can we have a motion for approval, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I just thought we should be closer. We have a few awards and recognitions tonight. And the first one is for the veteran of the month. We have James Byalata come forward, please. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the May 2016 Veteran of the Month recognition to James Byalata. Mr. Byalata enlisted in the Air Force in February of 2002, following the September 11th attacks. He was stationed at Ellsworth Air Force Base and was assigned to the 28th Civil Engineering Squadron. Byalata deployed to Iraq and routinely worked on the Iraqi side of the Al Tajee?
Al Tajee.
Al Tajee Air Base. He assisted with the fabrication and installation of armor plating over windows to protect US Army cadre living in living areas and offices. Transformed 150 acres to consolidate the Iraqi base into four permanent strategic locations and worked on $1.4 million restoration of a 16,000 square foot building that served as the 557th Red Horse Headquarters. Byalata served as the lead structure craftsman in identifying, inventorying, loading, and packing structural assets from Al Tajee Air Base to forward operating bases. At those forward operating bases, Byalata was tasked as lead journeyman in accountability, including tracking movement of tools and materials. He tracked and distributed more than $1.2 million in tools for more than nine crews to three forward operating bases and ordered over $65,000 in tools to assist the incoming replacement unit. During his military career, Byalata was decorated with and awarded the Iraqi Campaign Ribbon, the Global War on Terrorism Medal, the Air Force Overseas Ribbon, the Air Force Expeditionary Service Ribbon with Gold Border, the Air Force Unit Award with Valor and Oak Leaf Cluster, the Air Force Good Conduct Medal, the Air Force Longevity Service, the United States Air Force Non-Commissioned Officer Professional Military Education Graduate Ribbon, and the Air Force Training Ribbon. In October of 2006, Staff Sergeant Byalata received disability discharge as a result of back injuries he sustained while deployed in Iraq. Upon his return home, he decided to become a contractor. He employed many veterans, to include other disabled veterans. Even though Byalata had suffered from chronic back pain for the last eight years while awaiting surgery, he has continued to grow his business. Byalata has recently transitioned out of construction and is working on opening a sporting goods store. He intends to hire more veterans at his new business. Byalata is a life member of the VFW and the DAV and has been assisting other veterans for years. Mr. Byalata has been serving our country since 2002 with dedication and sacrifice, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, James Byalata.
I'll be very brief. I know everybody's here for a purpose. Thank you very much for the applause. If you can do anything, thank a veteran anytime you can. Thank you.
Now I have a proclamation to read concerning historic preservation. And how about if I have Eric Monroe come up? In case I forget how to read, he can help with the big words. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people; and whereas this place matters is the theme for National Preservation Month 2016, co-sponsored by the Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as National Preservation Month in Rapid City and urge all citizens to join in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And now Mr. Monroe has a couple things to say.
Thank you. In celebration of this year's Preservation Month, the Historic Preservation Commission would like to honor two important projects that are working to preserve and rehabilitate important pieces of Rapid City's history. The first award is for an adaptive reuse project in downtown Rapid City. Will Walter Albazie and M.J. Adams with the Seed LLC please join us at the podium? The AB's Feed and Seed Grain Elevator is located at the heart of downtown and is a unique and prominent downtown Rapid City landmark. Built in 1911, the AB's Feed and Seed Complex supported Rapid City and the region and agricultural industry, including processing, storage, and retail. After the grain operations ceased, the building sat vacant for nearly two decades until recently the Seed LLC began to clean up, restore, and redevelop the property. This project has presented many safety, design, and preservation challenges. However, the Seed LLC has worked professionally and creatively to bring this property back for the service and enjoyment of our community now and into the future. On behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, we congratulate and commend you on your immense amount of hard work and the creativity and community vision that you have delivered to Rapid City at the AB's Feed and Seed Complex. And they were definitely a pleasure to work with through the whole process. So in recognition, we have an award. Thank you very much.
Sure. I guess people say they were always surprised to receive awards, but we clearly were surprised by this and gratified. There's three objections that we heard since 2008, going to banks, investors, tenants, so on, that consistently we got. You'll never get parking past the city, there's never going to be parking there. And if that happens, you'll never get past Historic Review. And who cares about an old grain mill? So it turns out that we had, you know, I don't want to say we had a great time, but everybody in growth management, everybody in community planning, everybody at the fire department, Tim Billings and that crew, they worked us through every problem and we were able to get it done, particularly parking. And that was a tough one, and we got a good parking lot over there now with 31 parking spaces. So, and they're all lined and marked and ready to go. Historic preservation, same thing. They worked Gene, Eric, the whole crew there, and particularly Sarah, having her as a coordinator, smooth sailing. We have no complaints. These guys were great. And as it turns out, everybody cares about the old grain elevator. So, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
The second award is for a historic reconstruction project. And would Jean Kesloff with Historic Rapid City please join us? The McGillicuddy House is located at 727 South Street, just north of South Street and Mount Rushmore Road. This building holds tremendous value to Rapid City. The house was built by Dr. Valentine McGillicuddy, who over the course of his lifetime was a Rapid City mayor, dean of the School of Mines, state surgeon general, and a government agent at Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Historic Rapid City purchased the house in 2011, which had lost its second floor and experienced several other altercations at that time. Excuse me, alterations. There might have been some altercations. For the past five years, Historic Rapid City, alongside many generous volunteers and donors, have taken great commitment and care to accurately reconstructing the house to its original grandeur. In doing so, Historic Rapid City has brought much public awareness and appreciation for early Rapid City history and preservation as a whole. Just this weekend, archaeologists uncovered a historic wooden sidewalk that has been buried for over 80 years. On behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, I thank you for your commitment and diligence to preserve Rapid City's history. We are so pleased to award you with the Historic Preservation Month Award.
First of all, I would like to present a McGillicuddy T-shirt to the mayor. I am Jean Olsen Kesloff and I am president of Historic Rapid City. I would like to introduce Secretary Tricia Mastelark, Board Member Bill Kesloff, Advisor Committee Chair Melody Jacobson, and Fred Thurston, who is in the audience that won't come up. Those that are unable to be here tonight are Nancy Gowan, Vice President, Kim Mori, Treasurer, Father Chris Russell, Donovan Sprague, Jeff Repel, and Adriana Gian Turco Saltensdal, Valentine McGillicuddy's granddaughter. This award really belongs to the people of Rapid City, those that have volunteered their time, their equipment, their materials, manpower, and money. Historic Rapid City is just the facilitator. Our historic sites and landmarks are more than just tangible reminders of our past, they are our heritage. They represent chapters in our city's history and have endured because the quality of construction, building materials, and craftsmanship are unequaled today. Through respect, dedication, and commitment to our community and its history, we can maintain their place in our future, because once they are gone, they are gone forever. I would like to thank the city of Rapid City for recognizing that Rapid City's history does matter. Projects like the McGillicuddy House bring the past to the present and are a gift we give to the future. They tell the story of who we are, where we have been, and where we are going, of great accomplishment and of great sorrow, of a spirit and ingenuity that took a fledgling town called Hay Camp to the regional urban focus it is today. Anybody that knows me knows I love quotes, so I will leave you with a quote. "If future generations are to remember us more with gratitude than sorrow, we must achieve more than just the miracles of technology. We must also leave them a glimpse of the world as it was created, not just as it looked when we got through with it. We must not only protect the countryside and save it from destruction, we must restore what has been destroyed and salvage the beauty and charm of our cities. Once our natural splendor is destroyed, it can never be recaptured. And once man can no longer walk in beauty or wonder at nature, his spirit will wither and his sustenance be wasted." Lyndon Johnson, 1964. Thank you.
I have one more little story for you. You know, Rapid City is known as a giving community. We have a lot of generous individuals here. And those that give know that the real gift is on the part of the giver, not the receiver. And especially where there's sacrifice. So, I have an award, a recognition now, that I want to make to a nine-year-old girl. I'm not talking about you. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna, even though I asked, I'm probably gonna mispronounce it. Myira? Mira. Mira. Mira Cronin. Would you come up here and bring your parents with you? This is a good deal. I'm gonna read a proclamation and I might fill in a couple details as I know them. But all the rest of the details are found in today's front page story on the Rapid City Journal, complete with some pretty pictures of a nine-year-old girl and her family. So here's the proclamation. "Whereas Mira Cronin recognized that not all animals in our community have a loving home where all their needs are met on a daily basis. And whereas Mira set out to dedicate her allowance and earnings from her assigned chores over a nine-month period to make a contribution to the Humane Society of the Black Hills, which relies on public funding and donations to keep their operation running. Whereas over the course of the last several months, Mira diligently performed chores for her mother and father, earning a grand total of $158." And by the way, some of these chores paid 25 cents. Oh. Sorry. Well, it's in the paper. Twenty-five, fifty cents, a dollar. And also for your grandparents? Is that true? Oh, yes, that's right, for birthdays. So $158. During this time, when she's saving her money, she's denying herself purposely the things she loves the most, candy and toys. She refused to buy herself things because the animals needed the money more than she did. So whereas Mira donated the entirety of her monthly earnings to the Humane Society of the Black Hills on May 3rd, in addition to another contribution, which I believe was the sale of your Xbox, of $150 that she collected. Whereas Mira's dedication and contribution will assist the Humane Society of the Black Hills in their efforts to care for an estimated annual intake of 4,800 rescued animals that are in need of medical care, food, shelter, and attention. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, proclaim May 16th, 2016, as Mira Cronin Day in Rapid City and urge all citizens to observe this day by acknowledging Mira's selfless efforts to better our community. And frankly, I hope, I pray that all of us will follow her example of sacrifice and of someone who's got a real giving heart. So thank you, Mira. Now we're gonna have a few words by the representatives from the Humane Society.
I just wanted to say, and the Humane Society wants to say, thank you so much. And personally, I think you might even have a small claim on a kitten that I adopted because you probably were responsible, in part indirectly, for feeding that kitten. My daughter might argue that point, but still, very impressive. And I think we as citizens are looking at the future of Rapid City as far as what we all want to emulate and be proud of. And thank you, thank you very, very much.
And Mira, just because you've given so much, I have a bag of cinnamon bears that they're for me. But, no, these are cinnamon bears which you can eat as soon as your braces are off or whenever you want. or whenever you want to. And also, a $20 gift certificate for downtown Rapid City. And here's a list of all the stores you can use it.
Thank you, and I hope everybody donates to the Humane Society as well.
Okay. And we're back. Now, we're on to general public comment. This is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at this meeting on issues not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. So I have a few names to call here for general public comment. And keep in mind, everyone coming forward, that you have a three-minute time limit. So we will start with Allison Hansen.
My name is Allison Hansen, and I just want to start by telling you I appreciate your time. And I also appreciate what the city is doing for the community with the Mount Rushmore Road project, and we support the project. I understand the task at hand can be difficult and that there is not a resolution that everyone will be happy with. All we are asking for is three temporary stop signs in the stretch between Kansas City and Franklin Streets to allow children, elderly, and pedestrians in the neighborhood to cross the street safely. We are asking for nothing permanent, nothing that is of high cost, or something that requires a large amount of manpower. I have with me the minutes from the February 25th, 2013 West Boulevard Neighborhood Association meeting. Dale Tech from the Public Works Office gave a presentation, and he pointed out that there had been three pedestrian car accidents in the area over the past few years prior to construction beginning in the meeting. He also, Mayor Quaker opened up the audience to comments and questions. And one of the questions asked was, "Will all this be reassessed during construction?" And the answer given was yes. Another question asked was, "Can temporary stop signs be put in place during construction to slow traffic?" The answer again was yes, and the decision will be made by the city as construction plays out. At the time of the meeting, the other construction projects, those being Fifth Street, I-190, et cetera, were not mentioned, so people did not anticipate the volume of traffic that we are now experiencing. Also, at the Public Works meeting last week, the police representative stated that there had been over 100 traffic stops in the Boulevard area in the past year. With all these considerations, I believe it is best to err on the side of caution. Shouldn't the safety of the neighborhood be more important than the extra minute or two added to someone's commute by a stop sign? Thank you.
Thank you. And now Kristin Urie.
My name is Kristin Urie, and I'm here on the same issue that Allison Hansen is. And I guess I just kind of want to add a little bit of my thought on the process. I had attended a lot of the meetings with the West Boulevard Association, the Mount Rushmore Group, prior to this all starting, when all these concerns were addressed. And everybody kept stating that there'll be one lane open on Mount Rushmore Road and that everybody would be routed to Fifth Street. And unfortunately, Fifth Street's under construction, and nobody's taking Mount Rushmore Road, and everybody's taking the Boulevard. And so as I said, I've lived on the West Boulevard since 2001. I have three small children, two that attend Wilson and walk across West Boulevard every morning and every afternoon. And I can't even back out of my driveway, nor can I have my kids feel safe crossing the road because people are speeding and just not being aware of the West Boulevard neighborhood because they're not used to traveling down there. So we're not asking people not to take West Boulevard. We just want some type of temporary stop signs, whether it be two or three, that placed in the Boulevard area to slow down traffic and to make it safer for small children, pedestrians that are running, elderly people that are at the hospital at the beginning part of the Boulevard. And what prompted all this was, a couple of weeks ago, I was coming back from dropping my older daughter off at school, and I saw all the traffic that was lined up on the Boulevard. And I thought, you know, I'm just gonna follow this line of traffic and see where it goes. And I followed a Budweiser van and all the rest of the traffic, all the way down the Boulevard from St. Joseph Street to St. Pat, where they then all turned left and then turned right and went up Mount Rushmore Road. I turned left to go back to my office, and I took Mount Rushmore Road, and there was only three cars on Mount Rushmore Road at the time. So I guess I would just, I support the project. I just would like somebody to make safety a concern. And I guess I don't want it to be where some little kid does get hit until we can get some of these temporary stop signs put in place. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now Darla Drew would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We acknowledge the report from the Wilson and West Boulevard Association group. You're not part of the group, right? You're just people that... Are you part of the association?
I'm on, I just recently was voted onto the board of the West Boulevard Association.
Okay. Just to acknowledge your report and say that your ward reps have heard you, and we will be working on this with traffic controllers. And we want to make sure that their safety is a primary concern of ours, and want you guys to hear that and know that we will be working on it with you. So thank you.
Okay. Now, we have a request from George Farabee.
Good evening, and thank you. I thought I followed the guidance correctly. I was wanting to remove a couple of items from the consent calendar, and I don't know if I got guided right or not. We don't do it this way over in the county, so I'm obviously a rookie at this. I would like to remove items, if this is the time, I'd like to remove items 20, or 12 and 21 from the consent calendar.
Thanks, George.
All right. Thank you.
And now, our last general public comment form is from Teresa Cologne.
Hi. I was at the meeting on May 11th, 2016, and a council member had asked Jeff Barber if he had received any return letters on the matter. And he had said no. But when I went through the paperwork down in the finance office, I did find an envelope that had been returned. And I don't know if that'll make a difference, but I just wanted to let it be known that there is a returned envelope down there.
Okay. Thank you. And now, we're on to, now, we're on to non-public hearing items. Oh, I think that was item 24. Oh, I'm sorry, 29. Okay. Now, we're on to non-public hearing items, items four through 186. There are no speaker request forms for these items, four through 41. So we'll go through the, go to consent, items four through 41, and I take it we are pulling 12 and 21. The council like to pull any other items? John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull 27, 28, 31, and 34.
Okay. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three I'd like to pulled. Number 30 for discussion. And just so that you know, I'm pulling 35 and 36 simply for the opportunity to abstain from those two items.
And Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15. And, let's see here, item number 20.
Then, the motion to, need a motion to approve the consent items excluding 12, 21, 27, 28, 31, 34, 30, 35, 36, 15, and 20. Can I have that motion? No. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the items, accepting those. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Say no. Now, on to item 12. Can we have that read in by Ron Wyffenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deny appeal of onsite wastewater disposal and treatment permit per ordinance 1320, Kurt Anderson. Motion is to approve the...
Okay. We have a motion in it. I turned my volume down now. Hold on. The motion is to approve the denial. Go to Jerry Wright.
I was brought to my attention that Mr. Anderson has come in and paid, and it was issued for his drain field. Thank you.
Okay. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Freebie wanted this pulled, or Farabee wanted this pulled. Do you have something you want to say on it, George, or did you just want it pulled?
Excuse me. I apologize for not asking to combine 12 and 21 since they're identical issues. And the number, person for number 21 is in the audience. I'm unaware that Mr. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, did what allegedly had done. I just talked to him a couple, three, four hours ago, and I listened to the, well, I guess, do you want to combine those two items or you handle them separately?
Let's handle them separately since they're two different people.
My intent on both of them was to continue them so we can have further discussion before we make a decision that might wind up going further. And I think we can handle these things at a lower level. So my request would be to continue both 12 and 21. So for now, continue at number 12.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that we couldn't do that, the applicant would have to be the one asking for it, not, no offense, somebody random from the audience. So thank you very much.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the denial on item number 12. Seeing no further speaker lights, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. It's gone to item 21.
15.
Okay. 15.
Item number 15, authorized mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the city of Rapid City and Highway Improvements, Inc., for asphalt surface crack sealing project number 162331. It's a CIP project in the amount of $149,250. I'll yield.
Darla.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would have this question for Pauline Sumpson. Since I did have a constituent call about this particular item, is there a list of streets that are going to be addressed? Is there anywhere someone can see where the work is going to be done?
I am actually going to defer that to Dale Tech. They have, they handle all that. I just know that this is part of a state contract, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Dale, is there somewhere that people could see a list of projects or, you know?
We did not attach one to the agenda. This is part of our street rehabilitation process that we use. Typically, we issue a crack sealing contract, or piggyback on the counties in this case, and do crack sealing on streets that we're going to be chip sealing next year. So we try to get in one year, crack seal, next year, chip seal. If you'd like, I can provide that map to you and the council and get that out to you in the next day or so.
Well, I don't know if the rest of the council is interested in it, but I have, yeah, I'm very interested in it because this is a call that I get fairly frequently on streets. So, yeah, you could send that to me, and that would, that would help a lot. Thank you.
Very good.
That addresses my problem. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Mayor, I'll move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve in a second. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I have a follow-up question to Mr. Dale Tech, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Dale, if you're offering to get it sent to the council, is it, is it too large to attach to this item on the agenda so that it would be available to the public?
No, it wouldn't be too large.
Is it possible to go, that way, the public would have access to it as well?
Certainly.
If it's not too, I know some maps are too large, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. No, this, this is not the case for this particular one.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Okay. We have a motion to approve item 15. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Now, item 21.
Actually, item 20. Item number 20, approved change order number one to Protac and Tennis, Inc., for tennis courts and play courts resurfacing project number PR 166128, for an increase in the amount of $46,934. My motion would be to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Yes. I think I, I will direct this to Dale Tech or the parks. Okay. Yeah. Jeff Beegler. Oh, excuse me. Jeff Begler.
The other Jeff.
Jeff Begler.
Good evening.
Okay. So, you know, this is quite a, quite a boost here in the cost of $46,000, so, you know, almost $47,000. Maybe you can tell me why it's gone up so much?
Yes. This is for the work that's being done at the Parkview Tennis Courts. If you're aware of those courts, those are post-tension concrete courts with a surface coated on top of those. Six of the courts began to experience some peeling of the surface. Six of the courts began to experience some peeling of the surfacing from the concrete surface. We had, the scope of this project originally was to repair those areas which had been peeling away, and then put a new surface on top. When the company started addressing those areas, it appeared that more of it might peel off in the near future. So we felt that the best way to address these, and so did the contractor, was to completely strip the surface off of those six courts that are, that are in question. And then shot blast the concrete to give it a little more texture in order to accept the surface coating inhabited here better to the surface. This will also come with a three-year warranty, which we thought was a great idea.
Well, I think that makes sense. I just wanted to know why, why the steep incline, whether, you know, the cost of materials went up, like we've been seeing in a lot of projects that have come across the city budget, but I just wanted to see what was going on there, so thank you very much.
Now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Jeff, well, you're standing there. Just a couple of questions. I've had quite a few people that are really excited about these projects, because the tennis courts have got into pretty bad disarray. So first, I want to say thank you for doing it right, but how did you fund this? Did you fund this out of your five-year plan contingency?
This is out of our Parks and Recreation CIP. So yes, it has been, we've been, it's in a five-year plan that this is the year for it, so.
I was just curious if this was going to come back as an item eventually, you know, as a supplemental appropriation.
No, no, it's been budgeted for.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item number twenty. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, Mr. Mayor, deny the appeal of onsite wastewater disposal and treatment permit per ordinance thirteen-twenty. Ted Chamber, and I'll yield as I understand he's in the audience.
Would you introduce yourself, sir, and then tell us, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Ted Chamber, I live along Bennett Road.
Okay, and what would you like to say about this item?
Well, frankly, I think it's a kind of a ridiculous thing for anybody to try to come up with. I got a letter stating that in order to protect the water in Rapid City, that I had to have my septic tank pumped and inspected. I believe, maybe even conservatively, that the closest place to Rapid City would get their water from would be at least five miles from my property. And nobody would believe that water runs uphill. I prepared a little bit of a, so I wouldn't miss too much. I've lived on that place for seventy years, if I get one more month. And there's never been a problem with whether our water would be contaminated with our sewerage system, whatever we use, outhouse, or, or the septic system, whatever. There was no problem then, and there's no problem now. So the city invented ones. They come up with this idea of having the water protected. I received a letter from the Public Works informing me that they wanted to have the septic tank pumped and inspected. I thought it was ridiculous. In order to be able to get to Rapid City's water, any water would have to travel at least five miles uphill. Even one water, one mile would be ridiculous. I received a second letter stating I had not responded to the first one, which is no surprise, because how do you respond to somebody that don't know which way is up? And I got a third letter threatening legal action if I didn't respond. So I went to the Public Works office to explain why there was no possible way my septic tank could affect Rapid City's water. I was told my property was within one mile of Rapid City limits. If I disagreed with their action, I could write a letter of appeal. I did write a letter and delivered it to Jesse Reeve on twenty-ninth April, and I have a copy of that letter if you'd like to see it. At the May Public Works Committee, I attempted to convey my feelings on the matter, and they pretended to listen to me, asked a few dumb questions, and then voted to deny my appeal. I believe they had no idea what the situation was. When our meeting was over, I was convinced the total of the entire committee could not come up with a nickel's worth of common sense. If I may, I would like to have the city attorney clarify a few points on the city regarding their position on this matter.
Mr. Chamber, your, your time is up here, sir. We'll go to the council now and let them hear, or let them deliberate this. We'll go to Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chamber. I'm one of those guys on that committee that doesn't have much common sense, but I will direct your question to our city attorney, so you can understand the jurisdiction the city has when it comes to the county. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Mr. Landin to explain to Mr. Chamber in a short version of why the city gets involved in the one mile, and who actually put the ordinance in place, and why we are.
Okay, Joel Landin, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. It wasn't just, the, the septic ordinance was not adopted just by Rapid City, it was also adopted by Pennington County. Purpose was to protect both Rapid City's water and the water for the residents of Pennington County. For administrative purposes, the, all territory within one mile of the city limits of Rapid City was, the city of Rapid City has taken over administration of that. We send out the letters. State law allows the city to exercise its police power, and the police power is the power to regulate for public health, welfare, and safety within one mile of the city limits. So jurisdictionally, we have legal authority to regulate. I think the focus on the water flowing uphill is missing the point that both the county and the city have adopted the exact same ordinance, in that for administrative purposes, we have taken over the one mile, but the regulations are the same in both the county and the city. So to argue about it not affecting Rapid City's water kind of misses the point of the entire scheme of regulation. So if, if the city did not regulate outside the city limits, then the county would be forced to step in and regulate. I know Mr. Farabee has strong opinions on this, and I believe it was discussed previously. And the council suggested to Mr. Farabee, if he did not want the city regulating within the one mile, that if the county indicated a desire and willingness through the county commission and its staff to take over regulation within the one mile, that you would certainly consider giving up that, that authority and let the county take over. To this point, I am unaware that the county has taken that action. So until they do, we have continued to regulate within the one mile of the city limits. It is, under state law, perfectly permissible for us to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Landin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'm not sure, Mr. Chamber, if that makes any more sense to you, but basically, we're administratively taking care of the county's business in this one-mile arena. Your best bet would be to talk to the county commissioners that actually are directly affect you in that arena. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify one point that the attorney missed. I am bordered on the west side by Box Elder. And the city limits are at least two-thirds of a mile from my property. I submit that Box Elder would have jurisdiction, and they have not proceeded to do any common action. I think Box Elder would have priority over Rapid City, because I can't believe in the laws that you could go from your border across another city's border to get to property that's not even contingent to their property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Still, I think we're lacking a motion on this item. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to uphold the denial of the appeal.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And now we're on to item number twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-seven is to approve the reclassification of the Rapid Transit manager. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion and a second. And you have the floor.
And yield the floor. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question from a constituent on this. A couple of things for clarification for me, too, is, I guess I don't understand why this position wasn't there in the first place. I mean, I know what the responsibilities of this position are. So can somebody answer the question of how many employees are underneath, probably Jeff, how many employees are underneath Rich over at Public Transit?
We'll go to Jeff Barbier.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a bit of a complicated question, because a lot of our Rapid Transit employees aren't full-time. You know, there's a lot of half and three-quarter employees over there, but I think in terms of actual bodies, it's about forty-five.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I have one question for Pauline. Do you know what the difference is going to be in the, in the wage from the old scale, and what was the old scale?
I am also going to defer that to Jeff Barbier, because he's in charge of the HR side of things.
Actually, what'll happen with this is grade twenty-four sits about ten percent higher than grade twenty-three, but this won't be an immediate raise for the employee that is the RTS manager right now, Rich Segan. What'll happen is he'll get moved from grade twenty-three to grade twenty-four in as near as his current wage as possible. So it'd be a very, if it is an increase, it would be very small at this point. The advantage would be, in the future, the top end of grade twenty-four would be higher, would be higher than grade twenty-three. He'd have more years.
And Rich has been there quite a few years.
He has. So he would have more years before he reached the top, but it's not an immediate raise. That's not why it's being done.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I think we already have that. Motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All those against, say no. Motion passes. Now on to item twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-eight is resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-three-five to amend the city of Rapid City compensation plan by establishing the new position for code enforcement division supervisor within the community resources department. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. All in favor of that motion, signify by, oh, I'm sorry, I was just looking for your light. John Roberts.
Well, Ron Weifenbach's in there, too. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask Jeff Barbier a question on this, too? I had another constituent question on this. Jeff, can you tell me, how many code enforcement officers do we have now? Is it three, or is it four?
This would be, this would be the third. Isn't adding a position. We have an open FTE, because one of our ordinance officers resigned. And so instead of filling that FTE with an ordinance officer, we're going to fill it with an, in-the-field working supervisor, is why this is being created.
Okay, so you're gonna...
He'll supervise the, he'll be working in the field with the other two officers, but he will be, also be their supervisor.
So we need a supervisor for two people.
Well, Alderman Roberts, what we're doing, I mean, the real point of this is that right now Barb Garcia oversees code enforcement directly, she's the division manager, and then reports to me. We're removing Barb out of the chain of command because of all the community development things going on, and some of the affordable housing initiatives and things. She has more than enough to do. So this person will be the direct in-the-field supervisor, and will report directly to me, and Barb will no longer be in the chain of command. We are also gonna, we also are going to create a code enforcement board, and what that will be made up is representatives from, for example, you know, PD, Public Works, Planning, the other departments that we work with. They'll meet probably every two to three weeks. They won't actually have any formal authority to direct work of code enforcement, but they will be like an advisory board, so there'll be a dotted line to them as well.
And it's moving from level, it's up to level seventeen, but from where to seventeen?
Well, it was at fourteen. The other two officers are at fourteen, and this one was at fourteen before it became a supervisor position. So like I say, that supervisory responsibility will be put on this position, taken away from Barb Garcia.
And we have a motion and a second on this. So all in favor of this item, say aye. Opposed, say no. Two noes. John Roberts and Ron Weifenbach. Okay, motion passes with two noes. Now we're on to item thirty.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirty is to approve the carry forward from fiscal year 2015 for the CIP budget. And if I could, Mayor, I'd like to ask Pauline Sumption a question concerning the carry forward.
Yes, you may.
Pauline, I apologize for not seeing this before the legal and finance committee meeting, but since then and now, I pulled it back up to review what we're actually carrying forward. And my question is concerns the contingency. I understand carrying forward amounts that are already programmed, or allocated, or in the process of a project. So there are two contingency line items in here. One is for Parks and Rec for roughly thirty-four thousand dollars, and the other one is for information technology for roughly two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars. Why would we carry forward contingency money that's not earmarked specifically for a program or in the process of a project?
Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These contingency dollars are dedicated to either IT or Parks and Rec. Those different divisions actually, or department in Parks and Rec's case, actually build that into their budget, so if there are cost overruns, a prime example would be the tennis courts. If something like that happens, then they have that money within their CIP budget already and don't have to touch the general CIP contingency money. As far as IT is concerned, they actually do have a lot of things out there that they are looking at doing, but right now their focus has been on our software with our financial package, and so, and so that has been wrapped up. They don't want to dedicate that money to those other projects in case we might need a little more for that, that software project.
Isn't their current 2016 budget already contain contingency money?
No, they have a five-year plan every, you know, that rotates every year. And there may be some contingency money in there, but not to, not including the stuff that's being carried over. Those are for those, those ongoing, or the new projects that are coming forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion on this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this item, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes with one no. Now on to item thirty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirty-one is to approve the request to cost share the remodel expenses for the county detox expansion through the CIP committee budget. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion and a second. Now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you very much. One of the things I was going to ask, I didn't read where it said it was through the CIP budget, so I'm guessing the CIP is the funding source. But one of my concerns here is, when you read this, it says that it's, it's their preliminary budget. No fixed costs. Is there anything run in there for overruns, or are we just gonna blanket approve whatever it costs? Because right now it shows it's nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand and change, and I'm just curious about what this might cost us.
If I might, Mayor.
Yes, Pauline Sumption.
The motion made at the CIP committee was to spend three-hundred thousand dollars a year for 2016, 17, and 18, with the maximum being nine-hundred thousand. No additional funding would be provided for the city's share.
That clears that up? Thank you, Pauline. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not exactly sure opposed this question, too, but I believe there is a motion to approve. I'm not sure, but, my question is, was this prioritized in the CIP? I know we've got people calling about the roads and streets all, all the time, and they seem like they keep slipping down the list because we keep moving other items in front of them, so I'd like to know how this was prioritized, if we knew this was coming up, or if it, or what exactly happened. I guess, maybe Pauline would answer that one.
I can give you a general answer. The, the actual scorecard was not done, but the discussion was, and if you look at the bottom of a CIP agenda, how the priority has been identified in the past, and has kind of been a focus of the CIP committee, is health, safety, and welfare comes first. And this would fall within those, that category, and that's why the, the CIP committee agreed to this. And the members can correct me if I'm misspeaking for them.
Right, I guess. Right, I get streets, Mr. Mayor, in my ward that are safety issues that keep going back. I've got streets in some of my fellow colleagues' wards that are safety issues. I just want to make, they got prioritized, they were in there, and all of a sudden they come back and they're gone. They just keep disappearing, so I'm not sure how we're prioritizing this stuff. And I guess, thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wyffenbach, just so that you're aware, this came out as a necessity and was brought to the CIP Committee. From what I remember, the discussion at the CIP Committee, we didn't take this money from any other projects. This money came out of undesignated cash, and we spread it out over three years to lessen the burden of taking undesignated cash from the CIP funds. That's why we worked with the county in order to stipulate that the $300,000 would be paid over, you know, $300,000, over three years to come up with that $900,000. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, back to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that, Amanda Scott. The one thing that I'll say, and we had the conversation also, I think it was like 60 days ago, about Menelusahon's roof. And nobody could seem to find any money for their roof on their building there. So, I mean, if there was undesignated cash there, it wasn't brought up at that time either. I just think we should revisit that one again. Thank you.
Okay, John Roberts.
Thank you very much. I had one more question that came to mind when I was thinking about this that I hope someone from the CIP Committee can answer. In this new detox building, new move, what's going to be the increase in beds? What's going to be the increase in size? Does anybody know?
Let's go to Police Chief Carl Jagerus for that.
I can't tell you an exact number, but it provides significant growth opportunity for the county alcohol and drug program. There's a lot of moving pieces to this. I believe that we've shared with council our intention to seek a MacArthur grant, which we were not successful this year, but we anticipate applying for again next calendar year. And depending on the funding ability, will depend on the capacity for the beds.
Thank you very much. And that just brought something to mind when I was thinking about that, is more beds means more cost to the city and the cost share for detox. And we already, I believe, supplement detox, what, close to half a million dollars right now? Four hundred and some and change?
That's correct.
So if we double the size of detox, we'll be doubling the size of the city's share. So I just want to put that out there. So people know it and know it's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. And now back to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wyffenbach just wanted to clarify from the CIP Committee meeting concerning the Menelusahon roof. When the roof estimate came in, it was reviewed by city staff as well as, I believe, a private contractor. I think a private contractor went out with city staff. But when the roof was looked at and reviewed, it was determined that the replacement of the roof, which would have met the criteria for the building, city building, as well as the cost that needs to, the minimum cost that needs to come through before, or through CIP, would have been met. But it was determined at that time from the CIP Committee that potential repairs could be made to the roof to, because the estimated life on that roof over at Menelusahon is roughly about another eight to 12 years. And so I believe a member of the city council or the liaison was going to go ahead and take a look at possibly getting some repairs. Because if the city council wanted to take a look at actually trying to help out on that government building, it would probably have to come out of the general fund rather than the CIP at that point, unless it is a roof replacement. That's what I remember from the CIP minutes. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment on this discussion. I did go on a ride-along last winter, it's probably February, with the police department. By, I think, midnight, most of the beds that were available for detox arrests were filled. You know, whether it was at the detox center, or Suzanne, or even the hospital. We need these beds, you know. It's going to cost us in social costs. That's where we're going to make up the money here. Because people go out and get arrested just so they can have a warm place to sleep, you know. So a lot of these things are social costs that we will benefit from by providing more beds for the people that are in these situations. It's a social illness. And it's got to be addressed in a way that actually makes more sense because we'll have more beds for the people that need them instead of just, you know, putting them over the hospital or wherever it's costing us more money. So I think we need to do this to be able to take care of the costs. Actually, I think this will bring down the costs of what we're looking at with them, helping with the detox center. Thank you.
Thank you. We're talking about a cost share for remodeling. Alderman Roberts brought up the split between the city and county on the detox. Detox essentially is funded through grants. And what's left, in the neighborhood of a million dollars, is split 50/50, city and county. So when the beds increase, when the operation increases, I think it's likely that there would be an increase. But it, the determination on how much staff and how many more resources are going to have to be used for beds will determine the increase. So certainly wouldn't expect a 100% increase on the city's side. But I believe we could invite the sheriff to come back to a council meeting in the future and give us the overview on the detox project and let us know what he's thinking about that thing. So for now, let's vote on the cost share for the remodel. All in favor of that. Do we have a motion on this?
Yes.
Sorry, I forgot. Let's, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And now, we're on to item number 34. Nope, 34. Item number 34 is to reject all bids for one new current model pothole patch truck. And that was John Roberts, I believe. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can I ask a question of Dale Teck?
Yes, you may.
Dale, I was looking through this, and I just noticed that at least one of the bids came in underneath what the estimated cost was going to be on. I was just curious about why this bidder was rejected.
Correct. Correct. With the bids, as you can see, there was an individual bidder that submitted two bids. Typically, what they do is spec a different truck chassis. As I understand, none of the, I believe it was the low three bids met the specifications. And so the high, the apparent low bidder with the fewest amount of exceptions is over budget. And that's the reason we're recommending rejecting, and we'll go back and take a look at the specifications to see if we can get better competitive bids in our price range.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion? Okay, a motion to approve the rejection. In a second. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Item number 35, which is to approve the award for limestone gravel to Pete Leanonsun's Inc. for a total of bid amount of $52,297. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that I'm abstaining from items number 35 and 36.
Okay, so a motion on 35, please. Approve. In a second. And all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 36 is to approve award for ready-mixed concrete to Hills Materials for a total bid amount of $87,250. And Amanda Scott abstaining from this one. Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we are done with the consent calendar. Now on to non-consent, items 42 through 186. We have a open public, we're going to open public comment on items 42 through 186. And we have two speaker requests on item number 43. And the first is Eric Hykes. And just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Thank you. Council Mayor. It's our opinion that the sidewalk along Elkvale, I'm going to be, I'm going to cut right to the point here, for our client, be waived. For these reasons indicated on our April 20th memo, it's just not the best location for that sidewalk. I don't think it's going to be used, in my opinion. It's about 550 feet away from the closest sidewalk to the north and probably a mile to any sidewalk to the south. Simply put, grades are also difficult to accomplish a sidewalk that meets Americans with Disabilities Act on that routing. That shoulder is steep in locations, and it may require some significant retaining wall or other grading to accomplish a proper sidewalk. We have a kind of a compromise that we're proposing in that we have created a much larger sidewalk along Turbin Drive to the west side of the property that would allow criteria as a mixed-use path and aligns with, I did a little research, your future comprehensive transportation plan for both bicyclists and pedestrians to use. So you're actually getting the value that you're asking for in that instead of doing a five-foot sidewalk on one side and a five-foot sidewalk on the other side, we have proposed doing a 10-foot sidewalk, an eight-to-10-foot sidewalk on the west side. On the matter of the staff's recommendation to deny, we respectfully agree to disagree. And on occasion, we do that in our practice. And we'll politely request that of the council tonight. I do have my client here today, and he also has turned in a speaker request form. He mentioned to me that of his 44 future employees, he did not expect any of those employees to be using the sidewalk on the said location. But that could be different if it were mixed-use and allows bicyclists and other modes of transportation on the west side. And I'm speculating there optimistically, so. But, John, is that correct? You don't think any of your employees are going to walk to work on that? Okay, so almost a mile to the south is where the other sidewalk would connect to, so. That's all I got. Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. And John, is it Gillum?
Hi, thank you for your time today. I'm John Gillum. I'm one of the owners of Eddie's Truck Center and Back Porch SD LLC. Like Eric said, we're here asking for a variance on that portion of sidewalk along Elkvale. Our property sits in the middle of Elkvale. So as Eric mentioned, if you go to the north, there's going to be 550 to 600 feet with no stretch of sidewalk to the north of us to connect us to anything before you get to Eglin. On the south, I drove it this morning. It's about two miles to the nearest crosswalk. But there is no sidewalk at all on Elkvale on the west side. There's one small portion on the east side by McDonald's on the other side across from us. But just thinking about that sidewalk and the little use that it's going to get is the reason we're opposing it. We have no problem with sidewalks in general. And if we thought people were going to use it, we'd love to have that out there. The property that we own does have a waiver protest recorded on that property. So if the city in the future wanted to build a sidewalk there when it met the city's needs for transportation and folks walking, that would be available. So we would ask that the city approve the variance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to the end of the public hearing items, 42 through 186. So we'll close public comment, and we'll go on to item 42. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 42 is the first reading of an ordinance number 6114, the supplemental appropriation number two for 2016. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 43. We go to Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 43, deny per staff recommendation and request from Forefront Design Inc. for Back Porch SD LLC for a variance to waive the requirement to install a sidewalk per city ordinance 12.08.060 along North Elkvale Road, Lot 2, Block 2 of LaGrande Substation, Section 33, Rapid City. I guess I'll yield here.
Okay, we'll go to John Roberts.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Forefront Design Inc. for Back Porch SD for a variance to waive the requirement to install the sidewalk per city ordinance. And hold the floor for a minute if could.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and you still have the floor.
I pulled this last Wednesday on Public Works because after looking over this, this is another one of the places where we're going to put a sidewalk in where there's not going to be sidewalks on either side of it, for one thing. The topography is bad for another thing. And I don't believe we should ever put a sidewalk on a road that has 55 mile-an-hour speed limits. I think that there's a safety concern there, so that's the reason I pulled it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very familiar with the area you're talking about. There is, there's a lot of logistic problems with the topography there. I'm happy to see that your business is going there, by the way. I'll take this chance to tell you that. We, the council's also made some other accommodations for that gas station there because of the way the road was made to get more people into that corner there. I don't, I don't foresee there being a sidewalk needed there. And if we do want a sidewalk, if the city council in the future, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, wants a sidewalk, they can assess it anyway. At that point, there's nothing ever to keep the city council from making those assessments. If you find that you need one, maybe you'll put one in yourself. But I don't see anybody walking along Elkvale Road on a sidewalk. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to oppose the motion on the grounds that there is sidewalks in this area. There is a curbside sidewalk, as Mr. Gillum mentioned already, a curbside sidewalk already on the north side of this property. And as Mr. Gillum mentioned already, that there is sidewalk already on the east side of the road by the highway next to McDonald's, using them as a comparison. I believe LaGrande could put in a sidewalk very similar to what McDonald's has over there. And looking in some other areas, there is some other curbside sidewalks in, next to Eglin Street. And then also, there is sidewalks going across the bridge that is constructed by the DOT over there. Based on those reasons, and I also don't believe that the logistics part of it, as far as the terrain is concerned, I don't see that being a real major issue, I guess. It's something to be overcome, but I think fairly easily. So I'm going to oppose the approval for denial, or deny the denial.
Okay, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to chime in on this one, and I agree with my wardmate, Mr. Nordstrom, on this one. I drive Elkvale Road every morning to work, and I see often many people using Elkvale Road. Unfortunately, they're walking or running on the shoulder. I believe it's a lot of the people that are staying at the hotels. I think long-term, it would be smart to have it there just because of the fact that, based on the location, it makes it a little safer. We actually have these people out walking and running on the shoulder. I see it almost every morning, especially during the summer even more so. So I will not be voting in approval for the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, this is the area south of Dakota Stakehouse, correct? Is that about approximately correct? Yeah. The speed limit's only 55 there? Okay, maybe I'll slow down next time I'm going that direction. Anyway, so we've got all that property going from the, people going to this soccer- people going to the soccer fields and whatnot. I'm wearing a soccer jersey right now, but, okay, just wanna make sure I was on the right board there. I, I'm not sure who walks there, but, all right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the variance. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I think there's three noes, but let's have a roll call just to be sure.
Estes. Lewis.
Aye.
Drew.
Roberts.
Nordstrom. Scott. Laurenti. Wright. Wyffenbach. Motion passes. Six to three.
Okay, thank you. Item number forty-four. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number forty-four, waive warp on Dias Avenue. I guess that's the end of the, and I'll move approval to waive the warp.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on item number forty-four. And go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I did go ahead and stream the Public Works Committee meeting and did talk with Mr. Bill Freitag because he wanted me to be aware of what the discussion was. And then I also followed up with a discussion with him. I thought he brought up some really good points, especially listening to the city attorney, Joel Adine, and Dale Teck chime in as well. I, I did let Mr. Freitag know, and so I just wanna be on the record. The reason I'm gonna be voting no on waiving this specific warp is that I think that, from what I heard at the Public Works discussion, I would rather see Mr. Freitag work with staff and come up with a recommendation of where city council wants to go, going forward with warps, as far as what we want to put warps on and what we don't wanna put warps on. There were some very good reasons not to put it, and Alderman Roberts chimed in, especially with causing some issues with the chain of title and stuff for. But the positive side of it is, is that granted, if, whether they read it or not, if it is on the title, then the property owner is forewarned that there's potential of having something there. So, at this time, I already let Mr. Freitag know. I, I can't support this because it's trying to navigate a decision of direction that the city council is trying to take going forward, and I think it needs to be handled by city council and staff with a recommendation of what we're gonna see for everyone coming forward before we can do this. I, I did express to Mr. Freitag, I, I would have welcomed him working with staff because he said that's what he would like to do, is work with what that would look like going forward. So, thank you, Mayor. I yield the floor.
Thank you. And before we go to a vote, I will just clarify that this item, number forty-four, pertains just to the development for Bill Freitag, the current development. But there really should be a longer-term discussion on how we want to deal with responsibility for infrastructure improvements on developments. I'll be directing staff and inviting city council to participate in a review. But I think it's important that we just know what we're doing and why we're doing it, and that's, I think that'll be good moving forward. So, go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your comments. Yeah, I, I just think the way we do stuff right now is kinda broke. I just wanna explain, I voted no at the committee level because of what I felt was reading the advertising and the, and the agenda. Tonight, I don't have a problem. It, it's been properly advertised in my mind, and the public has received proper notice. So, that, if you've streamed it, that, that is where I stood on my no. So, is that it was added, and previously is on just simply as discussion, and then it was added at the meeting for there to be a decision made, and I thought that that timing was a little short. So, I will yield. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to approve the waiver of the warp. And we'll go to one more. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to join in with my councilwoman, Amanda Scott, in voting no on this as well. And I would also appreciate having some further discussion on leapfrogging as well. That's one primary concern what I have with this area is that we are, the way I'm reading this is where we, we would be, or the city would be allowing a leapfrog in this area for developing beyond what we have the, installing utilities, for example. So, extra fees and everything would be, have to be added onto that for the, for the extension of water and sewer lines, not just the streets. But there's some other issues that need to be discussed in that direction that you're gonna be giving to the city staff as well. So, I appreciate any comments that you can direct to that as well.
Duly noted. This needs work. So, all in favor of the motion to approve the waiver, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Two noes? Three noes? Item passes with three noes. Item forty-five, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty-five is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign two agreements with Waters and Company for executive search services for the positions of Director of Planning and Development Services and the Director of Public Works. I'll make a motion to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Barbir a couple questions, just clarifying questions, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Jeff, as it was brought up at the legal and finance meeting last Wednesday, there's a, there's kind of like a warranty with this, working with this company. Could you please explain the services that will be provided?
They're gonna help us do a national search for the two positions, for the Public Works Director and the Community Planning Director. They not only will find, you know, try to find us qualified candidates, but the first thing's gonna start is research on the side of the consultant. They'll come here, they're gonna interview some of us involved with these positions, tour the city and the Public Works and planning facilities, meet some of the staff, really try to get a good idea of what we're looking for. Then they'll conduct a national search, and not only searching for qualified candidates for us, but also marketing the city of Rapid City to these candidates, so that hopefully we can get as deep and as talented a pool as possible, as important as these positions are for the future of our city. As far as the warranty piece of it, if the, if the person that we select from the position, from the date of hire, if they leave within twenty-four months from either position, then Waters and Company will, once again, do, go through the search process, and this time free of charge. We, we won't get charged again if the, so they're trying to give us some comfort level that the person that we hire will stay here. The last two gentlemen that served in these positions served just over four years, didn't make it to five. And, you know, we're hoping to get some, a little more continuity and somebody that's staying a little bit longer.
Thank you. And just because this company will be doing a national search, it doesn't preclude anyone who is currently an employee of the city of Rapid City or a current resident of Rapid City from also participating in applying for these positions. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct. Like I said, we hope to have as deep and talented a pool as possible, but if the, the best qualified candidate lives in Rapid City or already works for the city, that's who we'll hire.
All right. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Okay, I'm gonna help Mr. Barbir answer the question about the warranty. The one, as he stated, was protection against resignation or termination for twenty-four months. If that occurs, they'll, they'll reinstitute the search under the original contract with no additional funds. Secondly, they will, initially, they will recruit, and, and they will do initial screening and turn over batches of candidates for us, groups of six or ten or some number. And if we, they will continue to do that until we find a candidate we like. So, they guarantee placement. And thirdly, they, as part of their contract, they will not recruit this employee once placed for the remainder of his career with this city. So, and I'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this, but I do ask that you and the council leadership set up a meeting time with the full council to discuss where we're gonna go in the development of our Public Works and Engineering, and also our Planning Department. We have some huge issues. We just talked about that with the growth that we see occurring and how we are going to fund, not only through streets, but drainage and water and wastewater and, and all that. We have mixed sources of revenue. We have a shortage of funding for street maintenance and on and on. And I think we need to sit down as a council and visit with you, and where we think as a council can support and wanna change how we're doing business and help you get that done. We're operating under a system that's been around a long, long time, and we've outgrown it. And I think that it would be very good to have the buy-in from the ten members of the council. And I would suggest we do it in the next couple of weeks, if possible, and renew it also when we get new, if we get some new members in the council after June. But it's imperative that we do this and do it soon so we can get our put into it and some discussion on where we think we should go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I did read through the contract, and I thought it was pretty watertight. I thought it protected the city very well. And also, I like the idea of casting a wider net. I'd like to see some diversity in these positions, possibly, you know, a woman or a person of color to be brought into the, the city departments would, would certainly give us a different perspective. And I, I always hear when he takes this position or with him, so let's try and diversify our thoughts on how this can be filled with a, with a possible woman candidate, or maybe a Navajo or somebody like that. So, that's my, that's my side on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't really wanna touch that one, but with all due respect, I understand, the city of Rapid City is an equal opportunity employer, and I think that they'll do everything they can to get the best candidate, and I understand the national search. I'm not against doing a national search. What I don't think we're ready for right now is searching for somebody that we don't know what we want. I liken it to a basketball team, to make it simple for the people that are listening to me. If the team needs changes, and we go out and we recruit a coach, there're gonna be certain criteria that they're gonna be looking for in that coach. We're doing a survey or a study over in the second floor right now because of the amount of constituent contacts and those types of things that it has. And we're looking for opportunities there, but yet, we're gonna go out and try to recruit somebody that we don't really know who that person would look like, or what they would look like. It's not clearly evident, a lot of things aren't clearly evident. Number one, what is our culture here at the city? Because I understood in a lot of people that run political campaigns here talk about it over and over and over again. Now is the time for us to put our money where our mouths are and look at this and do it properly and do it correctly. Identify who we think is a qualified candidate. I remember back when we looked at the fire department years ago, and they had a clear identity of what they wanted to do. They went out and they did a national search because they wanted a specific person to have a specific job, to do a specific thing within the fire department and make some changes to the fire department. It worked out well. The guy didn't work here that long, but that wasn't relevant. What was relevant is when he did hand it over, he had something good to hand over. And I think, from my perspective, if we just take a little bit more time and identify what that person might look like, those two people, because there are two important factors within our city. I look at those positions way differently than somebody else may look at them. That's, so just to go out and hire a firm that says, we want somebody, well, okay, who is that person? What are they, what would you imagine that they look like? What kind of corporate environment are you gonna put them into? And what do you expect them to do? Do you expect them to come in here and cut people? Do you expect them to come in here and change programs or processes? What kind of person are we looking for? That's where I'm at on this thing. I don't, we are clearly not ready for that right now. If we are, I haven't, it hasn't come to me in that format that says, I can support this, 'cause I sure can't. Once we identify who we are, what we want, I could, I could sign off on a national search, whatever it took. But just to sign off on something, looking for somebody that we don't really know who we're looking for, replacing the coach and not saying, do we need a defensive coach, an offensive coach? Do we need new players? Do we, do we need to just retrain old players? Do we maybe have a player in there that could be the coach? Something like that. We, we haven't done that exercise, and I don't think we're ready for this. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I do appreciate what Mr. Wyffenbach just said. I think that if we take the same criteria, looking for the same people, we're gonna get the same results. And unless this search company comes in and has something, and I guess this is kind of a question maybe for Mr. Barbir, in, in our, our, whatever we're looking for, for these department heads, has anything changed? Or are they gonna come in and, are they gonna change what we're looking for right now, what we looked for in Mr. Waltersdorf, what we looked for in Mr. Limbaugh? What, or is it gonna be the same criteria?
Alderman Roberts, that might be a question better addressed to the mayor. These positions ultimately, you know, will report to him, and they'll be his vision. But, you know, HR is here to certainly make sure that the person meets the minimum qualifications and that the vetting of the candidates is thorough.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I guess Mr. Wright brought up a good point, and I do agree with Mr. Wright, too, when this conversation started, that maybe the council should get together and we should, 'cause we're all gonna have different opinions on what we need or what we think Rapid City needs or what we're looking for, and maybe vet this a little bit before we actually go out and look for somebody or something. Because I know our former mayor, he had a criteria, too, and it didn't work so well. We don't have either of those people here anymore. So, I'm hoping that, that we can get a change, have somebody long-term, and make some changes that are definitely needed in Rapid City. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think the fact that we're hiring a headhunter is gonna answer the questions you're very much asking right there, is that it takes us out of the equation, makes it more neutral, and allows us to break it down to just, you know, what, what the job entails is a pretty clear description of these department heads, what their jobs and duties and responsibilities are. I don't think we've changed that, but it's not like it's, we're gonna suddenly say, you're not responsible for growth, or you're not responsible for Public Works. I mean, that's what these headhunters do, is they find qualified candidates, weed them out, and we don't have to sit here and try to micromanage the whole process. And I think it's probably a wise decision to go ahead and go forth this direction. And it's, let's face it, it's kind of a, I'm trying to think of a better word. It's appropriate for TV, but, so, luck of the draw without these people stick around. I mean, you can't. Life events come along all the time, and we've just been lucky, fortunate enough to keep some of the people we've had, you know, long enough, like, assumption, and some of the gentlemen down at the end of this dais. But, you know, people move on. And I think it's just, I think it's a good, a good move on our part to go ahead and try to make this as neutral and take us out of the equation as much as possible. I just don't think, we're, we're kinda temporary folks up here anyway. At least, I know I am. And some of the rest, you seem to be, in spite of all your votes, you seem to be wanting to stick around here quite a while. But anyway, talk to you later.
Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna add that on this, I think there's some things that, that may, like restructuring, if that's a possibility, and when we're searching and hiring, that we, as a council, will discuss, are we willing to fund that? Are we willing to support it back? Those are the kind of things I think we need to talk about. And I think it'd be important to help you out in this whole process. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I streamed legal and finance, and I appreciate all the questions. A lot of my questions that I had were answered there, but, you know, I, I agree with everybody here, but, but I, but I think that this can go on simultaneously. I think, I think we can start to search, but I think we do need to get together because, you know, just like we talked, or I think I mentioned, and several people mentioned, you know, we gotta figure out a new way to, for this city to say, this is the way we're, this is where we're growing, and this is how we're gonna build these streets. And, and right now, you know, when we, when we got tiffs and stuff like that, we just sit up here and pick who the winners and losers are. And, you know, and there, there is a little bit of leapfrog development, and we end up adding more roads that, you know, the present roads we have, streets we have, have a, need to have about a hundred-and-twenty-year life cycle, and we just keep, keep adding to that. You know, I, I've got a situation. I've got Deadwood Avenue. I got people that got annexed, and that's, that, we can't find funding for that. And we got large businesses, trucks, and everything else. But, but, but we also, so, so we, I think we need to simultaneously do that. But, but, but we also, so, so we, I think we need to simultaneously do this and, and I think we need to let the mayor know what, what we as a council are looking for and, and I think, I, I hope on the public works side, if we bring somebody out of town in, first of all, I, I hope they can bring their family and they can be part of the community. And I, and I hope that they, they can come from a community, if they come from out of town, come from a community and a thought process and a style that does things a little different than we do and maybe, maybe they teach us something and that we have the courage to, to follow, you know? One of the things we got to do sometimes when, I mean, I've sat right here and witnessed that some, we get a department head that gets an idea that, you know, and we want to put, we want to exercise our power, you know? And, and, and it isn't going to work unless we, we, you know, if we bring somebody new in to, to, you know, give them a little rein too and, and, and listen. And sometimes I think, I think the willingness to have, have, change things and embrace new ideas has got to start with us. So, and I'm, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers, it's pointing back at me. So I just want to let you guys know that. But I think we, I, I'm going to support this, but I, like I say, I think we can do this simultaneously, but we, as Alderman Wright said, I think we need to, I think we need to sit down and, and kind of have like the police guy do the, do the, do the drawing of what we imagine the person's going to look like and so that the mayor knows what, what we, we're hoping he hires. I yield.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have a question for Mr. Barbir if I can please on this item.
Yes.
Mr. Barbir, as you remember, I had a few questions at Legal &amp; Finance, but I have an additional question after some of the conversation this evening. My question to you is, if we're advertising with these headhunters, are we using the same job description as we did for the previous people that were hired for it?
Alderman Laurenti, we, for any position, but especially for ones this important, we've reviewed the job descriptions, made sure that everything's up to date as, as much as possible and that the position description accurately depicts what, what the job is, what the duties are. That has, that has already been done.
So is that pretty much the same as it was prior with the two people that were hired in these positions before? That's my question.
Well, I would say basically, yeah. You know, probably some tweaks here and there, but it's still a similar position to, to what it was the last time we filled it, obviously.
Okay. Thank you and I appreciate that because that is exactly, I think, what some of my colleagues are saying, is that for us to move a, a new way forward, and I like the mayor bringing this forward, I think it's a good idea. However, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we do want to try to define the traits, the job description. We really, maybe that's part of what the council needs to do is look at this job description and have some input on the job description so that it, it encapsulates all of the things that maybe some of the council members are talking about, Mr. Wright, Mr. Wyffenbach, Mr. Roberts, myself and all of the council, so that we are actually starting out something new. Because the reality is, once we put the job description out there, it's out there. I like what Alderman Estes is saying, but I don't think that we can do them at the same time. I think we do need to do this, but we want to start by getting a, if there is, a new job description that encapsulates really something new that we're looking for. This city is growing quickly. There's a lot of changes happening, we all know it. There's a lot of, we're going to have new council members. I think it would be important, those directors work hand in hand with a lot of the council. And so I think it would be good if we were able to look at the job description, break it down, put it back together, and if there are no changes, there are no changes. But I believe that there will be some substantive changes that will maybe elicit a better candidate. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. About the only thing that I'm going to add on to this conversation, and I agree with what everybody has said on the diocese here already, but I also do agree with Alderman Estes that I think we can handle both, both avenues of approach on this at the same time. I'm open for more discussion on, in the meantime, to have, let's talk about restructuring. We do have the Leahy report that's been followed by our previous director for the planning department and I, I think that's a good guideline to stay with. Once we start getting into the area of changing the job description for the public works director, I'm going to need a lot more expertise in it than, than what I can bring to the table on it to change that job description. But at the same time, still open to, if we can put it on the table, let's, let's talk about restructuring it as well. I don't think we should be afraid of making some changes at this point either. So that's, that's the extent of my conversation in addition to the comments. Thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. I, I just don't, I don't run for city council for my own health. I'm here to make a substantial change. I'm tired of hearing all the little innuendos about what we're going to do here, what we're going to do there. We've got a chance to make a difference here. And one is to make sure the culture here is something that we can do to recruit specific people. I spent maybe about, I don't know, about hour and a half talking to higher individuals who were responsible for recruiting at Black Hills Energy. And they, I asked them, first thing I said, "What does it take to get people recruited here?" And there's, there's a multitude of issues that have to be addressed to recruit somebody for these types of positions. But the one thing that was very evident was the fact that their corporate culture, their corporate culture is very important. Why do you think these people are leaving? They can go anywhere and get jobs. And the other point is, is what are you, what are you hiring the person for? Yeah, you can hire an accountant, but that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be an accountant. They may be, you may hire a businessperson who could handle a lot of the engineering problems. He may not be an engineer. He may not have to be an engineer, but he's a good manager. We need a manager who can communicate, who looks down the road and sees the future. One of the other things that they had mentioned was housing. The housing, the prices of housing here. Well, part of that is involved infrastructure costs, part of that involves red tape costs to get to that infrastructure or better ways to fund infrastructure. There's a lot of questions that if we get the right people and if we identify what we're looking for, that we can find that right person. I'm okay with, if we do it congruently, if I can get a commitment from this council up here that we're going to do that, I'm okay with using a headhunter. But I'm just not going to go out and headhunt for somebody I have no idea what. It reminds me of that big picture with that little dudes in the middle, you know, and they're seeing if they can find this guy, find Waldo. I mean, I can't tell you guys how important this, this is to get this right. We have a chance to get it right. The councils in the past didn't do it. We've got a chance to do it right. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Brad Estes.
Well, before we vote, Mr. Mayor, I guess, you know, I, I understand the, you've spoke about the headhunters and the warranty and that kind of stuff, but I guess philosophically, do you, I mean, can you describe what you're looking, I mean, you end up hiring this person and of course we, the council approves it, but I mean, would, would you be in favor if we approved this to, to kind of sit down and, and work with us and show us how you envisioned this or, I mean, do you have a kind of a philosophy in mind as to which way you want to see this go?
Yes, absolutely. I took into account the past search results from the last two positions for community planning and public works. That traditional style recruiting process resulted in exactly one candidate for each position that met the minimum qualifications and the desired experience. Also, recently, we hired a traffic engineer. That study, that recruitment took a long time, advertising in professional journals and other traditional style of recruiting techniques and it went on for months and months. Finally, a professional recruiter was hired and found this person. The, what's good about the recruiter is that they market to the applicant and their family. They market the city. They try to find someone who believes this might be a match rather than leave, leading a, or just reading a, a job opening in a, in a journal, they get to see what they would be getting into. So that's very positive. But keep in mind what the role of the recruiter is here. He will be recruiting, they will be recruiting and taking applications for this position based on our job description, based on the information they gather when they interview city staff and, and then they will start the process. They will send out letters to current public works and planning directors and they will take applications and they will screen, they'll do initial screening based on our criteria, who are the best possible choices from information in that job description and other information they learn from us. And they will send us the names of a group of them. And at that point, although they will be here on site, the choice is ours, not theirs. So the public works director left in December 2015 and I intentionally delayed the selection process for that position because I wanted to get a better feel for public works, the type of work we did. You know, it's pretty easy to figure out some of the departments around here, especially the ones with half a dozen or so employees, but public works has 240 employees. They have their finger in nearly every type of business that involves a shovel or a tape measure from one end of the city to the other. And it's confusing, especially for a relatively new mayor like myself. So that in mind, and at my direction, the public works department implemented a self-evaluation process through the Association of Public Works and that is a national evaluation. So that, that will answer some of my questions and that is, does, how does Rapid City's public works stack up against the national average, against the professional standard? Things change. The public works demands of 40 years ago is not the same demands as today. Things are different. There's certainly more regulation, as we already heard, and there's, there's a significant number of challenges. So they are nearing the completion of that evaluation and the final report should be out in the first week of June. That is in an effort to make sure we know what we're getting into and that we are able to adjust, make any changes to situations so that we don't hand over our baggage to a new director. And during this time, I've looked at the possibility of restructuring public works. I've asked a number of the council members and a number of the public works employees what they think about the structure and we had charts laid out on the table and talked about various scenarios. And, excuse me, one thing I didn't want to do was just a restructuring for the sake of restructuring. So we looked at the obvious breaks in the type of service being delivered in there and it seems to me that the, the most natural way to divide up the public works department is to separate out water, clean and dirty water, from the rest of the operations. And all things considered, and after some extensive conversations, I couldn't see any benefit, I couldn't identify a goal that we would be trying to achieve by restructuring, especially at the cost of an additional apartment, department director. So for me personally, I gave up the idea of restructuring based on those things. There is a job description review, which means we look over the job description, we evaluate it based on the, our last position, the, the person last in that position and the work that's been done and we see if there are any irregularities or any things that need to be changed. We also compare that job description with other agencies and we see if we are matching some of the trends in the way that the items are put into those job descriptions and the demands on public works directors. And...[1485.01][1485.01][laughter] I'm trying to answer all the questions that I think you have already asked and the ones that you're going to ask so we can vote on this. So that, there's been a, a job description review. I, I trust and I know all of you and I know us and I'm guessing that in the end, you're not going to want to ignore what's being done on the national level and in the public works profession and create your own job description that says something different. But I would certainly welcome a review process. I value your opinions. And I communicate with the council with written letter. I've written two letters to the council on this particular issue, trying to answer every conceivable question that you might have. And in both letters, I asked for feedback and I've gotten three emails now from the council offering feedback. I also assured the council that you would be involved in the selection process. So there's no, no, nothing sneaky going on here. I, I, I believe that, I believe that we are going about this the right way and I believe that we are ready to hire a recruiter and move forward. But I value your opinion, but I'm not sure that the city council can change the, can change the culture of a city work group when we may have up to 10 different opinions on what the culture issue is. I think that's why we have a, in part, I think that's why we have a CEO. So I'm just asking you to, and keep in mind, I pick, we select, I pick, you confirm. And this is meant to be upfront, above board, out in the open. And I do welcome comments. In fact, that's why I've been asking for them and I'll continue to ask for them because this is important. If this were so easy, we'd have, we would have appointed these people by now, but this is not easy. These are critically important positions and we've already talked about public works a lot. I'll just say briefly about community planning. The community planning director position is tied directly to our comprehensive plan, which many of you have some problems with. So we need to implement a comprehensive plan review process. But in order to do that, we need involvement and we can get staff together first and start making some recommendations and then we can invite, an ongoing invitation and then we can schedule sessions with city council members because it pays, it doesn't pay, make any sense to go ahead with a community planning director hiring and expecting something different if we have the same plan that none of us really agree on. So that's all part of the plan, part of the selection process going forward. And now we'll go to everyone except for those who have already spoken twice. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I spent less time courting my wife. So I was just going to say, as I think we are up here and we're, we're having all this discussion about this and I was all prepared to go ahead forward because it seemed to me that the only item I see this is whether or not we're authorized to sign the, the agreement to go ahead and hire a headhunter. And then now we've just, do you, you know, do we have that conversation gone off, the whole criteria and everything else, whether or not we want to restructure the whole system? And for my, my money, it's, I mean, if that's what you guys want to do, I'm not going to be here, so I don't care. But I mean, if that's, maybe it's too, too quick to go ahead and hire somebody if that's, if anybody really wants to go ahead and really think about tearing the system down and redoing it, restructuring or whatever, I'm fine with that if that's what you guys want to do. I don't want to go and spend $40,000 if we're not going to hire somebody that's going to have the same, I'm sorry, it's no cost, okay? Whatever. I don't want to go out and spend the money or waste the time, everybody, if, if we're just going to hire somebody and then we're going to try to do exactly what you, I think you were kind of alluding to, is take it all apart again. So I guess I'm, I'm a little lost. I was prepared to go forward with doing this, but it just, I don't want to, like I said, get another person in here and then we said, "Well, we don't like the way we're going to do this and we're going to restructure it or we're going to..." You understand what I'm saying? I just don't, it's kind of confusing to me now because I, I was fully prepared to authorize you to do this and I will still vote that way, I guess, but I just hope you guys would maintain the commitment to either trust the process and trust the mayor or make sure that you are going to work together and you're not going to just take this apart later on and say, "Well, we've already hired this person, but now let's change the job description and what they're doing, let's tear the department apart and everything else." I just hope we respect that much of the process anyway. Thanks.
And that's all. Everyone else has spoken twice. Everyone else has spoken twice. Oh, I, you got you down twice. And then you spoke. So, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve? All in favor of that motion signify by saying, well, let's go to a roll call, please.
Lewis. Drew. Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott. Wright. Motion passes eight to one.
Okay, thank you. For item forty-six, I feel like I need a break after that. Item number forty-six, uh, can we go to Ron Weifenbach and have the, have these, uh, next four items read in, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number forty-six, a request by Spurlet Consulting, Inc., for Park Hill Development, Inc., for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Track One and lots one through nine, Blocks One and lots one through twelve, a Block Two, a Park Hill subdivision, number seven, generally described as being located west of the intersection of Sydney Drive and Ridgeview Road, move approval.
For clarification, approval with stipulations, please.
Approval with stipulations.
Okay, did we get a, did we get a second? Okay. Uh, motion is to approve with stipulations. All in favor of that signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passes forty-seven, please.
A request by FMG Engineering for preliminary subdivision plan for Lot one A, Lot one B of HMC subdivision, generally described as being located east of Sturgis Road, north of West Chicago Street, and move, approve with recommend, with stipulations, I'm sorry.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second with approval stipulations. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Forty-eight, please.
Item forty-eight, a request by Steve Finkelstadt, Britain Engineering, Inc., for Glenda Ron, for preliminary subdivision plans for lots one through four of Ron subdivision, generally described as being located at one-three-nine-two-four Neck Yoke Road, and move approval with stipulations.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor of approval with stipulations, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Forty-nine, please.
Item number forty-nine, a request by KTM Design Solutions, Inc., for preliminary subdivision plan for Lot two A, two B, two C, two D, a Block Five of Elks Country, the state's generally described as being located at thirty-six, twenty-one Willow Ben Road, move approval with stipulations.
This is gonna take one vote. I'm sorry. What was it? You made a motion.
Uh, John seconded it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, now onto items fifty through one-eighty-six. Are all alcohol beverage license application reissuances. Uh, I have checked with the police chief, uh, prior to this meeting to see if there were any concerns with any of the applicants, and there are not.
Move approved, second.
Okay, so we're gonna move and approve, uh, we're gonna move in second, uh, for approval of items fifty through one-eighty-six. Uh, all in favor of that signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Those items pass. Thank you. And now, we were on to, uh, public hearing items, items one-eighty-seven through one-ninety-nine. We'll open public comment on, uh, these items. We have a couple of speaker requests. Uh, on item number one-ninety-six, Daniel Hodak.
I have some documents here that the mayor can have, but I, I couldn't find anybody already to give me copies of them, just to get an idea of what we're gonna do. I also have some copies of other people's documents, just so they can break through with the current, I don't know.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. Uh, I am here, uh, on behalf of about forty-two people on the Dolphin Lane side of the house. I have another person who's gonna speak later. He's on behalf of the, uh, houses on the other side of the street, which is a co- covenant. One of the problems we have out where we live is the everyday drive on Haynes Avenue to come into work between Viking Drive and Seahawk Drive from six o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock, then in the evening from four until six. It's an extremely challenging drive. It's very dangerous to commute residents and children, both to and from work and school every day due to the traffic congestion. The everyday drive on Haynes Avenue from Viking Drive to Seahawk Drive, at the times mentioned above, is extremely challenging and dangerous to commute for residents and children, both to and from work every day due to the traffic congestion. It's challenging due to the fact that there are school buses trying to get in and out of those sections to pick up the children. They cannot do it because the traffic will not allow it. People will not yield right away to get into those places. The proposed Caitlin Street commercial apartment complex will have two entry-exit points onto Caitlin Street, then onto Country Road West, directly connecting to the intersection of Haynes Avenue and Country Road. We were informed that there was a proposal to put a stoplight there to help alleviate the traffic problem. That's like putting a Band-Aid on a belly wound, you're hanging on work. The Haynes Avenue running north-south encounters in-and-out access complications at the German Lutheran Church and thirty feet south on Viking Drive. Then you go down to Bengal Drive, and then thirty feet south encountered from Bengal Drive, you will have in-access both to Country Road and Country Road West. Then proceeding another thirty feet down the road, you will encounter Lion Drive on the west side of Haynes Avenue. This is the North Haynes Avenue spaghetti bowl, as we call it. When brought up to the Planning Commission, the Muth Holding LLC representative and Ward City Council members informed us that, oh, they were gonna put up this traffic light, that would solve the situation. That will not solve the problem. The Community Planning and Development Services did not contact people in time. They contact, to them, contacted them two days prior to the day of having the meeting, which was at seven o'clock in the morning. A majority of those people had to be at work. They could not be at the meeting, so they were insufficiently informed of when to be there and how to be there. Another problem lies up that ten years ago, there was fifty thousand dollars paid by the Rapid City Planning Commission to undergo a, a vision to find out how to improve the community and business district of Rapid City. Well, that commission was done ten years ago. They made their recommendations, but we were told we could not change them, we were never informed of anything to do, and then that committee also said the Rapid City should develop their inner structure. They have holes, plenty of area places where they're not filling in commercial properties, and to stop spreading commercial properties into residential areas, which we are encountering. And I also like to take this time to thank our two ward members for being out there on Sunday. We did not bring all the rats with us. We tried to give you what we found out was going on in the minds of all these forty-one voters that I'm representing. He has another thirty-six that he's talking about there. Yes, sir.
Maybe you could, your, your three minutes is up. Maybe you could give your, uh, give some time to your, uh, to the other guy on this item.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Oh, and one last denim thing, sir. Uh, I like to bring that the, uh, office of the mayor of the Rapid City Council has one of seven core values. One of them is the bal- balance of pattern growth in Rapid City.
Thank you. James Sauter, also on item one-ninety-six.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and member of the city council, and I'd also like to thank Amanda Scott and John Roberts, our representatives, for coming out to the field with us and hearing our concerns in person on Sunday. That was very nice of you to do that. Um, uh, again, my name is James Sauter. I'm a homeowner in the Caitlin subdivision at forty-two-twenty Roberta Street. As I believe you've already been made aware, the homeowners of the Caitlin subdivision, uh, have circulated a petition in opposition of Plan Development, Development sixteen, P D O seventeen. There are basically about forty homes, townhomes and condos in our subdivision. Thirty-five homeowners have signed this petition, and the few that had, that weren't, working out of town, this is basically unanimous. People came seeking this out. People are upset about this. Uh, I'd like to submit this also for public record. This is the original of the petition. I also brought this down on Friday, so, in hopes that all of you could have a copy of the petition, that you could see our concerns, um, in case I don't have ti- time to get to all of them here. Uh, but I wanted to let you know that this is basically unanimous. We're all upset about this. Uh, our biggest concern is traffic congestion. Ten years ago, when the Caitlin subdivision was first developed, for some reason, they decided to do it with only one entrance and exit. There's only one inlet and outlet, and, uh, that was fine, because as a mix of, uh, townhomes, single-family homes and condos, the highest density properties, the condos, were in the back, the single-family homes were up front, so there wasn't a lot of congestion getting in, in and out of there with the forty homes. It worked fine with that field being open, but you put twenty-four units right there in that little field at the entrance to our subdivision. You are putting the, by far, the highest density right at the entrance. It's insanely inefficient, and it's gonna create a lot more, a lot more traffic for us coming in and out of there. It's already very hard, as Dan already pointed out, getting onto Haynes Avenue in the morning. This is gonna be hard getting out of our little subdivision. What I honestly think is, you know, this was zoned a long time ago, when this was an open field, when this was wide open out there. But when they first started planning this, I wish they would have considered, you know, when they made that decision to only, only have one entrance and outlet, to reconsider the zoning of that opening field, just because of the inefficiency coming in and out of there. Either that, or give us another way out of there. You know, it, that's just insanely inefficient, and I wish there was a way we could relook at that, change that, so that it could be low-density there and be a little more sane coming in and out of there. There are many other concerns. You'll see that on the petition. Um, we, we're concerned about property values. I know that there is no documented proof that adding an apartment complex to single-family homes can affect property values. Uh, to me, I look at this logically. It's not adding the apartment complex, it's where you're putting it, and the obvious traffic congestion is gonna be at the entrance to our subdivision. First impressions make a difference. If you're, if you're looking for a home and you see a neighborhood with only one entrance and outlet, and the highest density of traffic coming in and out of it is right at the mouth of it, that's a negative. It really is. It's, it's gonna be a negative to you looking at that property. Uh, so we see a property value issue, even though I can't necessarily prove it with numbers. We see a child safety issue. You, it's a small field, and you're putting two apartment buildings, uh, three stories high with twelve units in each. That's twenty-four families. Where are these kids gonna play? You've got the two buildings, a thirty-six-spot parking lot in the center and storage units. You know, we've got a park down the street, but these kids are gonna be spilling out into our streets. They already do that in the back of our neighborhood with the condos. So, there's a child safety issue that people are concerned about also. Uh, uh, there are a number of other concerns. Uh, many of my neighbors are here. Uh, uh, I can't think of all of them right now, but take a look at the petition, take a look at the comments. We have a lot of concerns, primarily it's traffic. And if nothing else, if we can't change this, in the future, consider this. When you're first developing a neighborhood, if they make a decision to only let there be one inlet and outlet, consider relooking at the zoning right at the entrance to it. Make it efficient, because this is gonna be a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is for public record, so...
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, sir. May I have a minute?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead. You state your name, and is it on the same item, I assume?
Yes, sir. My name is Diane Kemp. I'm a homeowner of forty-two-nineteen Caitlin Street. I'm a disabled veteran with severe PTSD. When I looked and bought my house, it sits in the middle of Caitlin Street. Caitlin Street is a dead end, very little traffic. I knew, or was informed, that the acreage or the plot that's right across from my yard, that they were probably going to build five houses on that lot that made it like Caitlin Street is now with five houses. I know progress is important, but I also think with progress, it should be tempered with community respect for what the people that own those homes on Caitlin Street, the way it is, the entrance to these two apartment complexes is going to be right across from my yard. The amount of traffic that is gonna take place on that dead-end street is gonna be astronomical and dangerous to children. What are they gonna do with all the children? As it is now, one of the ladies living on Caitlin Street, her son is being bused to Canyon Lake School, because that's the closest school that has room for him. Where are they gonna put all these children that are gonna be living in this complex? What, I submit that there's not been a lot of thought put into the quality of life of the people that now live on Caitlin Street and the amount of people that they want to put in these two apartment complexes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now to close the public comment time.
Uh, one, I have to get one name here on one part on this proposal from the, to build place. They said that the location is in the north, northwest corner of Haynes and Country Road. Uh, the northwest corner of Haynes and Country Road is a residential house. The owner of that house is very upset because they're planning on building this apartment complex and tearing down his house. That's what he thinks, because they're tearing up the road right behind on Country Road. This proposed building site is on Country Road West.
Okay.
It's an error, and the guy is really upset. He can't make it here because he's ill, so...
Okay, thank you.
I didn't mention that, I'm sorry.
Okay, now we're on to, uh, public, uh, consent public hearing items, items one-eighty-seven through one-ninety-two. Would the council like to remove any of those items? If not, can we have a motion?
Okay.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve items one-eighty-seven through one-ninety-two. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to the non-consent public hearing items. We'll go to Amanda Scott for item number one-ninety-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one-ninety-three is a request by, uh, by Spurlet Consulting, Inc., for a vacation of right-of-way for property generally described as being located on Wilma Street, north of Sydney Drive. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number one-ninety-four is to approve the vacation of a right-of-way of Schnee's addition. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion and a second. All of those, uh, in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number one-ninety-five is to approve the vacation of right-of-way of Canyon Lake Heights subdivision. Staff has made a recommendation that this be continued to June second, or, sorry, June sixth city council meeting, and I will make that motion.
Okay, motion and a second to, uh, continue to the June sixth meeting. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number- Item number 196 is the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a request by Muth Holdings LLC for a final planned development overlay to allow an apartment complex for property generally described as being located in the northwest corner of Haynes and Country Road, which should be Country Road West, as indicated by a citizen up in that area. Mayor, I'd like to pose a question, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. Dale, I don't, were you at the Planning Commission meeting? No? Vicky is. Vicky, sorry, I didn't see you sitting back there. Mayor, may I ask Vicky Fisher a question, please?
Yes, you may.
Vicky, thank you for being here tonight on this issue. I know that a lot of the residents were at the Planning Commission meeting when this came before the Planning Commissioners for consideration. A clarifying point, because a lot of the citizens that came forward today, they've got really good concerns about the traffic and about, you know, the location of this apartment complex, but really what is coming before City Council today is a consideration of a change of the apartment complex, because an apartment complex to support twenty-seven family units is really already approved, and the developer could go pull a building permit tomorrow if he wanted to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
That is correct. The property is currently zoned medium-density residential. The developer could come in and get a building permit for one structure, a maximum of three stories, and a maximum of twenty-seven units. Only because they're putting in two smaller structures and separating them is it required that the plan development be submitted. In other words, in our zoning districts, it says you can have one structure per principal use per lot. Because this is residential, they could have one apartment building. They want two smaller ones, hence it triggers the plan development.
So, just for clarification, Vicky, if the City Council were to deny or reverse the Planning Commission's approval as requested, it's not going to prevent this parcel of land of being developed with an apartment complex on it. Really what the City Council is looking at is the design presented at the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission approved of two separate apartment complexes on either end of the lot, that's three-story high with twelve family units in each one for a total of twenty-four.
That's correct.
Thank you, Vicky. So when visiting with the residents up there, you know, one of their concerns, and what they really talked about to start with, is they really wanted to stop this. And Alderman Roberts and I spent some time with them explaining just what Vicky clarified. So we wanted to get it on record that really what the City Council is considering today is the design of Muth for this new concept of having smaller family unit, or a total smaller of twenty-four rather than the twenty-seven, and then also separating the two apartment complexes, which would really give some visibility between the two structures that the parking lot will be sitting in. And if I remember correctly, Vicky, it also had some landscaping, and as well as some storage buildings on the lot.
That is correct. There's a twenty-room storage unit that will be available to the tenants, so they don't have items stored outside. It's also important to note that, number one, there is no access on Country Road. The Caitlin will be the sole access. There are two access points. But all of those approached locations are in compliance with the Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual. The buildings will be sprinkled, so it doesn't trigger any fire code that would limit this to forty dwelling units with one point of access. So they have met all of the criteria, and this was laid out as a multifamily development when Caitlin subdivision first came in, before their lots were platted. This was already identified as a multifamily-developed area for this subdivision. So it's been something that we've been anticipating. We were encouraged to see it come in with only twenty-four units instead of twenty-seven, and we do like the separated, smaller buildings, instead of one larger building, truly creating a visual buffer along that property, as it probably would run north and south.
Thank you, Vicky. And I didn't look this up, and maybe you can answer this, maybe you can't, but Caitlin seems to be a very, very kind of like narrow road with an apartment complex going in there. Is it a stipulation within the plan to have no on-road parking on the apartment complex side?
So whenever you do an apartment development, you are required to provide all of the parking for that development off-street. And they have done that. They have provided everything, including ADA parking, on the property itself.
Thank you, Vicky. Thank you, Mayor. I yield the floor.
Chad Lewis.
I think this mayor reminded of the joke of, what's different to the developer and environmentalist? Developer wants to build houses in the forest, and the environmentalist only owns one there. It's just, this is the kind of thing that, the reason I ran for City Council, because I had that happen to me a couple of times, where people would want, I would build, and they want me to donate the lots to the city for a park. And the idea was, whenever I, you know, sold someone a house, or someone would want to buy a piece of property I built or had for sale, there's a lot next door to them, I always tell them, "Plan a Walmart, go in there, because you have no idea what's going to be there in the future. It is what it is, and it's a vacant lot." And, you know, people always come in, and they're always upset someone's going to build something there. Well, I can tell you, that's just, that's the risk you take when you buy or build next to something that's empty. And I will tell you this much, is much I know about Mr. Muth is, he's the kind of guy that irons his work shorts. I mean, he's going to do it the right way. He comes into something, and he's very meticulous, he's very anal, for lack of a better word. And he does it the right way. He doesn't cut corners, he doesn't, he even thinks about what he's going to do before he does it. He doesn't come in here and just start throwing up, you know, random buildings or anything else. He's definitely thought out the process, and he's going to do it. I mean, he's just that kind of person. And he didn't get where he was from doing things half-baked. And, you know, I really, I just think that you're going to find, as you go forward with this process, it's not going to be as big a deal as you're concerned about right now. I just, it seems to happen every time, somebody is really worried about a project going in their neighborhood, and then you come back later, and a couple of years later, and it really wasn't as big a deal as you thought, and you're worried about it becoming. I've had it happen time and time again. I've seen it up here, I've seen it in my personal life, and I just, I think it's, you know, one of those projects that's worth doing, and I appreciate people willing to risk the money and the time to go ahead and build these kind of things. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I enjoyed talking to my constituents the other day out there on Sunday. I know that there's a lot of people that are upset about this. I know there's a lot of people that would like to stop this project, which is not going to happen. I mean, the project's going to happen one way or another, and I do want to give credit to Mr. Muth for bringing the project in the way that it came in. I mean, he brought in lower density, so you're going to have less cars. He brought in a project that is very appealing, so your first impression on the project isn't going to be one long, three-story building with twenty-seven units in it. I mean, he did a very good job, in my opinion, on what he's bringing forward. And it's a very difficult decision up here, because I know I'm going to make some of my constituents mad by voting on this, but, in my opinion, you're getting a better project than what would probably be brought forward, because I doubt if we denied what's on the board here tonight, that he would just walk away. He's going to build the twenty-seven units in the one complex, add more cars, add more traffic in the neighborhood, add more people, and add a big, long, ugly building that you can't see through. The way it is now, the, and I'm sorry, I can't remember her name, the one homeowner that lives across the street, it's going to block less of her view, because the storage units are going to be there, she'll be looking over the top of them, which will be lower than a home if there was five homes built across there. So it's unfortunate, it's an awful thing that I'm, I know I'm going to make my constituents mad by voting on what I think is the right thing. So, anyway, I am going to vote on this project, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the final plan development. Thank you. You know, I think it's, it's, yeah, the density's already approved. I mean, we're just, and it's truly unfortunate that the lady was, I don't know who misinformed her, but she was given bad information, and I'm going to support this. Thanks.
Clarification on the motion, please.
All right. Well, this is an appeal, so I make a motion to deny the appeal or uphold the Planning Commission's final plan development overlay, as requested by Muth Holdings.
Sounds good. Thank you. Amanda Scott for forty-five seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. I knew I didn't have a whole lot of time left. Just wanted to chime back in and let the citizens know that, as we had discussed, an apartment complex is going to go in one way or the other. James, I only have thirty seconds, so if you would like to make one other comment really quick, I can ask you what your opinion is.
Just really quick.
Can you please approach the podium?
Sure. Seeing that this is going to go through, is it possible that something could be done to outlet the other side of Caitlin into Haynes? Give us another outlet, or even something out the back of the neighborhood? Could something be done to give another outlet to get out of our neighborhood?
I believe the city, you know, any of the developers on that land will be looking at that going forward, but nothing can be incorporated onto this property in order to accommodate that at this time.
I understand.
But thank you, James. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to deny the appeal to the Planning Commission's approval. Is that clear with everyone? Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Next item, please, 197.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 197 is a second reading of Ordinance six-one-zero-eight and Ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Elizabeth Hunt for Maverick, Inc. for a rezoning from medium-density residential district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located at five-ten East Denver and five-oh-five North La Crosse Street. I make a motion to approve.
Second. And a second, and I'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had some concerns raised by the neighbors in that area, and I just wanted to let them know, I believe what we're trying to do is accommodate all their concerns, and I'm going to be supporting this motion, and I just wanted to be really clear with the neighbors in this new location for Maverick Store. It looks like a very good project. It will, I believe, also help and enhance and improve the neighborhood in this area. So, again, I'm just approving this.
Okay, thank you. Now Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, permission to ask Vicky Fisher a question, please?
Yes.
Vicky, as I looked at this, and I read some correspondence, I noticed that there's a proposal on the west property line to do landscaping and a screen fence. And you and I already talked, but I'd like to publicly, for you to tell me some of the residents in Denver, had, were curious if there, if a screen fence had been considered or possibilities, and you shared with me some of the thought processes on that. Would you please help me with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vicky Fisher.
So when this was routed out, needless to say, the police department returned comments that they were very excited to see the redevelopment of the site. They've had reoccurring issues on this property. When we looked at the convenience store that we knew was coming in, we did take some strict consideration of the fact that just across the street on Denver is single-family residential homes. And so when working with the applicants, we wanted to see what we could get to secure as much of a buffer as possible, yet still provide the police the open air that they needed to police the site. And the consensus was that instead of a four-foot-high fence, which is the tallest we could go along that south lot line up against Denver Street, that it would be better to go with landscaping that would allow the police more visibility into the site so that they could police it. In addition, they were very concerned that if we did put a fence up, that it would just become an area for graffiti. So the compromise was, let's do landscaping. We did get a screening fence where they share a common lot line with the single-family residents on the west side. We did get a screening fence there. There is no access to this development from Denver Street. That all comes from La Crosse and East North, which are truly our more commercial streets.
Thank you. I'm not sure the people in Denver will agree, but I concur with the thought process, and I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
And the motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 198 is a second reading of Ordinance six-one-one-five and Ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Renter Associates LLC for Ham Investments LLC for a rezoning from Central Business District to General Commercial District for property generally described as being located at nine-oh-two Mount Rushmore Road. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 199 is a second reading of Ordinance six-one-one-six and Ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by the City of Rapid City for a rezone from neighborhood commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located at seven-twenty North Maple Avenue. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is the bill list. We'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at eight million, five hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any objection to adjourning?
No.
We're adjourned.